All right, we will call our Committee of the Whole to order at 6:01 PM. We'll start it with the land acknowledgement. The town of Colhurst is located in traditional Blackfoot Confederacy territory. We honor the Blackfoot people and their traditional ways of knowing and caring for this land, as well as all indigenous peoples who have helped shape and continue to strengthen our community. I'm just going to flip back here to the agenda. So in front of us today, we just have the budget, the budget discussion. However, we have, there's been a request to add an item regarding attendance at FCSSAA. Is anybody opposed to that? No? Okay, let's add that in. We're going to add that in under other business, if that's okay, under seven? Seven point one? Okay.
Thank you.
So if there's, with that, is everybody okay with the agenda as amended?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, so we'll move right in then to our 2025 interim budget discussions, and I'm going to just turn this over to administration.
Hey, I think that's me. Welcome to 2025 Budget Discussions. We have a small presentation at the beginning, as well as the document later on. The presentation we're just going to have at the beginning is just a few slides, and it brings together some of the things that are sort of spread out amongst the different departments within the main document. So it's just a way of bringing those to council's attention and bringing them to you together, so it's easier to sort of look at those different items. So if we can move to the... Just before I do that, can everybody still hear our sound teams?
I can, yeah.
Yep.
Okay, the screen just broke. And I'll probably pop back as we go through the presentation. So with this small presentation we have here, I'll go through the reserve-funded projects, just to show you them in total, and also the taxation impact in total as well, and then we'll get into the budget document for the review and discussion. So these items, the reserve-funded projects are items that are included in the budget but are proposed as being funded by reserves, as they're not ongoing operational expenses. They can be one-off or special projects that we're doing. The first one we have there is a recurring one, which is the Parks Summer Student. In 2024, we had used some money from reserve to fund a third summer student, and we're proposing to do that same for 2025. Ideally, that would be rolled into taxation, but at this stage, I've left it as coming from the Parks Reserve, or sorry, the Operational Projects Reserve. There are some carryover projects from 2024 as well. There was the land use bylaw is carrying over with $15,000. The branding website is a bit of a fusion one, if you like. We did have the website in the 2024 budget at $15,000. There's been some discussion recently about the website and branding project as total. So I popped that into this here, but the price has gone up to the $60,000. So that is a new price for that project. Another ongoing project is the Recreation Master Plan. There's still $16,000 left to be spent on the master plan. There was a majority of it spent in '24. There's also a project for a commercial land assessment. This is one that administration have been talking about. With all the new people, we weren't 100% sure exactly the purpose of this, but I think it was for assessing what lands within the town of Colhurst would be best for the commercial and industrial type of property. So that's got $20,000. That wasn't started in '24, so that's also been carried over to '25. Any new ones that have come in for reserve-funded projects? So these, yes, they weren't in '24, they're new for '25. There's the Bellamy Financial Software. This is part of the financial software changeover. This was not completed in 2024. It's due to be completed in 2025 now, so we still need to have a financial software system running for us. So we need to continue with the Bellamy financial software for 2025. That's proposed to come from the administration reserve. The fire hall air conditioning, this is an air conditioning for the office part of the fire hall. And the fire hall security system is an upgrade to the current one, so installing some cameras, et cetera. Both of those are coming from the fire department reserve. For Protective Services, this is a radar, handheld radar gun, if you like, for traffic enforcement, $3,100 from the bylaw reserve. And then there is the upgrade to the skater system. This is something that is required every five years. This happens to be the year that it is required, and we are proposing that to come from the Operational Projects Reserve. So I'll pause here for any questions on the reserve-funded projects.
I see councillor Ackerman's.
Thank you, mayor. Just with regards to the Protective Services radar, is that something that we're going to need if we're looking at exploring the Ridge Regional option?
Through the chair to councillor Ackerman's, this budget at this time is presented with things that are known, and with that regional still being discussed and no signed agreement, we have gone ahead with this budget as status quo, if you like. This could definitely be something that we hold off in purchasing until we know for sure if we're going regionally or if we're not. But when you're preparing a budget, you can't really put something that we're still in discussions into the budget at this time. So the bylaw that's being presented tonight is status quo, as if the agreement was not going ahead. But that can always be changed if, when the agreement is actually signed, and then we can revisit that budget entirely.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I see councillor Florence or deputy mayor Florence.
Yes, thank you. Just a further question on the radar gun, because I was kind of under the impression that the province had changed the rules on that too, so that it could no longer be like a, where you can use the gun as a source of revenue by getting tickets. So I guess if it were something that you had kind of mentioned, Sarah, like when we relook at it and it could be potentially taken out, like at what point would it, is it finalized or at what point could it be taken out?
Through the chair to deputy Florence. We, I know what you're saying, once we pass a budget, usually those budgets, and we can like run with it, right? There could be, if council would prefer that to be removed at this point, we could then revisit that, put it back at final budget, and then we could have a look into those regulations that you're mentioning, just to make sure that we are doing that. Actually, Mitch has...
I believe that only stipulates in relation to photo radar.
Yeah.
The lining itself, it would be a handheld unit that would be in the vehicle.
Okay, thank you.
Which is a more active version of what's burning.
Okay, thank you. Yes, that actually makes sense to me now. The photo radar is the one, I think that they're having a lot of discussions about those regulations. If it's handheld, there's actually a person there with that handgun, handgun, radar gun. That makes it a different part of that regulation, but we can definitely look into that for you.
Okay, thank you.
I had a question as well.
Yep, go ahead.
Thank you, and it is just related to this as well, I guess across the board. Is it easier for us if we have concerns or questions, is it easier to take an item out of the budget and put it back in when we're finalizing, or is it easier to leave it as is and take it out once we have our answers? Does that make sense?
Yes, through the chair, yes, I understand what you're saying. Generally, once a budget is passed, everything in that budget becomes something that we can then act on. So if we pass it now, it is that we could then January 1st go and buy these items. Having said that, we could always put off doing that, because we know what we, you know, we know why we're putting that off. It can be removed and put back at final. There's two different ways to do it. Both would end up with the same effect in the end. It just depends on council's comfort with that.
All right, thank you very much. I just know that we'd had some conversations in the past as well, you know, with the use of our, oh gosh, what is it, the speed measurement device that we had. We had kind of looked if there were big errors or areas of concern, and we were looking at putting up, yeah, I guess it is sort of like a photo radar system. There's, and they were at Alberta Munis again, there's companies that sort of provide them, and they take care of all the work on it, and then you receive revenue on the tickets, and they receive a percentage because of their partnership with you, right? So that was a conversation we'd had, oh, some time back. So I'd like to perhaps leave something there, and with an understanding that we're not locked in, that we want to explore it a little bit and see what the regulations are and what would suit us best. Because if we did go to sort of that regional approach, it might be nice to also be able to have a way to generate revenue. Not saying I want to do it on our residents, but you know, our speeders, it's not a bad idea. As I sped up here. Okay, I'm just going to move you up now. Thank you very much.
Through the chair, no, we can definitely look into that. I have some experience with photo radar with my last municipality. There are a lot of regulations that govern it, and they change all the time. But that's something that we could definitely look at. I'm assuming if we go regional, that would be something we would talk about with our regional partners, though.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. Would you mind to go back to the previous page, just with the, there was, yes, that one, thank you. So just a question about the carryover project. So the branding and the website, so we had originally set aside $15,000 for that, and now it's coming in at $60,000. Can you just talk about the additional cost? Please, thank you.
I'll pass that off to our director of community development.
Absolutely. Thank you for the question. Through the chair to council and the deputy mayor. So this came from the discussion that we had at the previous committee of the whole, and then there is a resolution passed to move forward with the branding project as well as the updated website with the option two, which is the hybrid design website. And the quotes that we had received said that the branding would be up to $17,000, and then the website would be between $23,000 and $45,000. And so we put it at 60,000, so we could drop that website piece down a bit, but that would be the top end for that budget. Hybrid design website. And so the resolution from council was to then bring this budget amount forward for council's deliberation here.
Yeah, thank you. And I was there for that conversation, and I know that we made the resolution. I was just specifically wondering about the extra cost, so thank you for the answer.
Absolutely.
All right, if there's no other questions, we can continue on.
Okay. So this next slide that we have here is just looking at the total taxation impact and breakdown of the increase. So these items are included and funded by taxation as they are usually ongoing operational expenses. They're not a one-off for one year. They're usually ongoing into the future. So the total taxation increase being presented is $115,047, made up of the following net amounts. For the salaries, wages, benefits is $43,850. We'll get into those a little bit through the document. There was an adjustment for the ORSC commission. They had been going for a few years, hadn't really raised their fees, et cetera. So that's now come in with about another extra $18,000. We signed the Regional Emergency Management Plan with the county and the Noble Foot Barons and Pick Tribute. So our portion of that has brought in an increase of $19,350. The RCMP, I've looked back at previous years, it's around about a 5%, so I've done an estimate there of 5% from last year. The insurance is also an estimate. We don't get that billing until later on into February of around $5,000. The election costs, I have put that in as a taxation expense. It could, however, if council wishes, be covered by a reserve, because it is only sort of once every four years. I will be in the future bringing back a plan for putting a little bit away in a reserve every year for the election. So when an election year comes, we actually have a reserve to pay for that. So it would just be like an ongoing, you know, maybe $2,500 a year to a reserve for those election costs. But at this time, we don't have that reserve set up. And the rest is just miscellaneous inflationary adjustments, you know, relooking at some of our actuals and adjusting things to match what we're actually spending, coming around at about $10,000 for those sort of adjustments. So that's what makes up the taxation increase that's being presented. And just for information, for 2025, a 1% tax increase yields $24,928. So for every 1% tax increase, that's the amount of dollars that we actually get for that. This one at this time is sitting at 4.61%. This is the interim budget, though. It's definitely not going to be where it sits. There's so many things that can come in and affect us for that next year. We don't get our assessment till later, which will also, if there's a lot of assessment growth, we can have, you know, some added income there. So the 4.6 is just this very, very tentative interim amount. I could probably bet a million dollars that it will not be there come final, so, yes. Next, I think that's that slide. So any questions on the taxation impact?
Councillor Ackerman's, go ahead.
Thank you, mayor. Just a few comments, just with regards to ORSC, just to give a little bit of a heads up. They're trying to balance their fixed costs with membership fees, so that's why we're seeing a large increase this year. I believe going forward, we're looking at like 7% increase for next year and 4% the year after that. So it should kind of get us up to where the fees are kind of balancing that out, and then at that point, it'll just be kind of mini increases all the time. And then just with regards to RCMP, I don't know if administration has heard or not, but it sounds like there was a little bit of a freeze to increases that I'd seen through one of the Alberta emails that came out. So that might be a little bit of a saving grace when it comes to this budget, but I think that's only for one calendar year. So then we'd likely be seeing that increase coming the next year.
Thank you.
We'll go with deputy mayor.
Thank you. Just in regards to the RCMP, I too heard that announcement, and while I can appreciate that it's been kind of said to us as a freeze, if these costs weren't being downloaded to municipalities in the first place, we wouldn't have to wrestle with these large costs of increased policing. And so, I mean, it is what it is. So I just wanted to speak back to that a little bit. And then in regards to the ORSC stuff, and this might be a silly question, but with the services ORSC provides for us, is this something that would maybe be better sucked up under, like, is it under wages? Like, is this, or is this like ORSC services beyond what our planner does? If that makes sense.
Sorry, I'm just going to just recap your, are you wondering whether the ORSC, or if the ORSC could be included with the salaries and wages?
Yeah, I guess I just, and maybe a bad question, I apologize, I'm a little bit sick, but just looking at this, like, is it for the ORSC services, like, from Diane or planner? Or is it like ORSC in general, their fees are going up for GIS and things like that?
Through the chair, it's the second. It's for the amounts that we pay externally to ORSC as a contractor.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Ackerman's?
Thank you. Just to answer councillor Florence on that, so our membership fee does cover a lot of the stuff that Diane does for planning. It doesn't cover a fee for service, or if we're looking at like land use bylaw or an area structure plan or something like that, but when our planner comes to one of our meetings and helps us through a planning process, that's covered by our ORSC fees. So it would go to cover things like that.
Thank you. Can I just?
Councillor Caldwell, go ahead.
Thank you. Is ORSC not also picking up our tangible capital assets? Does that start in 2025, that they're going to be doing that as well? If they are, then we'll realize a good savings from where we're getting it done now.
Yeah, I'll answer that to council through the chair. Yes, they've started the process already, we've got most of our infrastructure assets in the GIS mapping system. So there potentially could be a savings from what we were paying the previous person to do that. I don't think we stood up with that or not, I can't recall.
At this stage, I don't think we did, just because there will be some cost, or that we just don't know what that is, so we didn't remove it.
Right, yeah, so there may be some savings there.
Thank you.
All right, if there's no further questions, we'll carry on.
Okay, so we'll move over to the main budget document, and we will go through this for council. So we'll start off with personnel. I know earlier up in the document there it said closed session, but we have actually added it into the main document this year. There's nothing that actually identifies any particular staff members, so there's no reason to have that in closed session. So also, because these, it's better to look at personnel as a whole rather than each individual department. So then you get the full effect of what the COLA adjustments, et cetera, will do. So the budget being presented has been prepared with a 3.22% cost of living adjustment for 2025. And this is based on the average consumer price index for the previous 12 months as of July 1st. So we do that rather than picking a month of the year, because sometimes one month might be very high or very low, and you're not getting the full effect of what that might be. So we usually do an average of 12 months. And this is applied to councils' remuneration levels, the staff salaries, wages, and also the firefighters' rate for their paid-on-call activities as well. There were some benefit changes this year. The sunlight benefit package has gone up around 12.5%. LAPP has no change from 2024. Their rates have stayed the same. EI has had a slight increase, and CPP has not put their rates out yet, but anticipating a slight increase there too. Yeah, so that's good. So now we can go down to here, what it actually does for this year, or next year, I should say. We only did with the COLA adjustment this year. There's been no other further increases for staffing. Included in this budget at this time is that second municipal interim, the one that we came to council about a short while ago. We have not received confirmation at this time that has been approved or denied. The, if we are successful, the position and all its costs are covered by the internship grant and then the MSI operating grant, as was the first interim that we had. If unsuccessful, it will be removed from the budget, and both of those have no impact on the taxation. So I just wanted to make that clear that even if unsuccessful and removed, it won't have any impact on the taxes. So this filing table shows the changes in the personnel costs from '24 to '25 and the net taxation at the bottom. So first section, where we have council, you can see the 3.42 increase, just because when benefits come in, it can sometimes move it away from the 3.22 that we used. So council's change is around $4,0250 for staffing. We have the, the first section there is the full change, but there's a lot of offsets with staffing. For utilities, because we have utility rates at a cost recovery, those salaries and wages are included in the utility rates, so they don't affect taxation. If we're using grants, et cetera, for the summer students, the operating grant, et cetera, reserves grants, sorry, reserves or grants for summer students or for the internship, et cetera, they also don't affect taxation because we are funding them from elsewhere. So the overall change for staff is $37,425, which is 3.37. And then firefighters came in at $2,075, which is basically the 3.22 that we mentioned earlier. So the total change for personnel and salaries, wages, benefits across the board is $43,850, which part of that total taxation impact we're talking about is a 1.76% increase. So I'll pause for any questions on the personnel that we can answer and open.
Any questions from anybody? If not, we can keep going.
So we'll move over to a quick rundown of the capital budget. We have there just the grant programs that we're using, the former federal gas tax, the Canada Community Building Fund, I'll take me while to learn that, MSI and the local government fiscal framework, and also there's some from small communities fund grant as well. We have some carryover projects from 2024. The sewer pipe lining, there were some delays and some contracts leading to the postponement. The storm trunk on 45th Ave, again, engineering contracts lead to postponement there as well. And the wet down development, there has been an ongoing project, including that dog park that has not been completed yet, so that's going to be moving over to 2025 as well. The next one, the other community gardens, that is actually completed, I learned today that that has been finished by 2024. So that will not be a carryover project into 2025 after all. The community center parking and lights, awaiting information from the electricity provider before beginning this particular project. And Kevin has something to him.
Yeah, I'll just add to that for council's knowledge. The community center parking lot and lights, the electric should be going in in the next two weeks. Finally got everything sorted out with Boris Alvaro on that. And in addition, the the, sorry, the dog park, I have got all the pricing for the fencing. That should happen in December possibly, the fence falling in. So some of this will still be completed this year, portions of it.
Thank you. So moving on to new projects, or sorry, any questions from council on the carryover projects? Maybe we should have a pause there.
Councillor, deputy mayor?
Thank you. I'm just curious about the, with the carryover project, it seems like there's been a lot of delays with engineering things. Can you maybe speak to that a little bit about what the delay is? And beyond, I guess, like putting it into 2025, does that make an impact on the budget at all for this year? But so the sewer pipelining is delayed, the storm trunk is delayed, and then as well, the sidewalk project was a little bit delayed as well. So just wondering, just curious about the delays.
To deputy mayor and council, through the chair, yeah, the delays were in part not having the three-year agreement signed with NPD Engineering. That was a previous decision, some previous staff members to wait until that was signed before moved ahead with signing the paperwork and proceeding with those projects. If that makes sense, I will.
It, it does make sense, thank you. And then I guess just that, then moving forward, there shouldn't be delays. Because now that kind of has been rectified, right?
Yeah, now we have a three-year agreement with them. There's no risk of anything coming back on the town. Moving ahead with the project without a formal agreement.
Okay, thank you.
And I think there was also a question about how it affects budgets from the deputy mayor too. So any amounts that were not spent in '24 were just moved to '25 that were already funded in the '24 budget, so that will just move forward into the '25 budget.
Thank you.
So new projects that we are proposing, we do annually spend $310,000 on road rehab. So we now have a plan for those projects, I believe Kevin, moving forward for the 310, that's a yearly road rehab. There's also a pickup truck for $60,000, a replacement vehicle for the fleet. We're replacing quite an old truck, but we will be holding on to that one for summer student use. That's coming from a common services reserve. Proposing a replacement of a spray park toy, the Aqua Bash, is for $25,000 from the Parks Reserve. At this point, I've put the regional pathway study in. We're waiting for final approval from that grant. We're using the Alberta Community Partnership intermunicipal grant there. And that's a feasibility study for the connecting pathway from Westbridge to Colhurst. And then there's also, under the Protective Services, a replacement of the drying for the fire department due to its age and just not being able to get the parts that are needed for it into the future. So I'll pause here for questions on the new projects.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. Just a question about the regional pathway study, it, I think it's very exciting. I was just wondering if the, kind of what you're talking about, if we don't get the ACP grant, will it be removed from the final budget? Or will it's, then we will find an additional funding source that isn't grant dependent?
Through the Chair to Deputy Mayor. That will be a decision of council, I think. At the moment, it is shown to be fully grant funded. If that grant falls through, I think there would need to be discussions on whether that would then be funded from our own reserves. And I believe that would be more of a council decision between both councils, because it's an intermunicipal project.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? None, we'll keep going.
Okay, so this is just a, a slide here, just showing the the capital budget as we presented it. Obviously, the community gardens, one more will be taken off, but for the one that comes for final review, now that that's actually been completed, but that's where we're sitting for our 2025 capital budget. So I'll pause slightly here, although we've already asked a question, but just in case there's another one that might come to mind.
All good?
At this point, also popped in here, the 10-year capital plan. Anything you see over on the side there where the the name is in, I guess it's orange, salmon, I'm not quite sure what that color is, but they're new ones that have been added since the last time you saw this document. The first column obviously is a 2025, so that one is what we've already talked about today. Going forward, you'll see there's different colors for different things, it's all sort of a color-coded sheet. But really, the ones that don't have a color with them, they're one, projects that are in the 10-year plan, but we don't have funding for them at this time. And of course, any of these projects can be moved around into different years. It's just a plan, it's not a capital budget. But we are required to present and have council review our 10-year plan every year. So this would be what comes forward also to a, a final review meeting as well for council. So I'll pause here as well.
Councilwoman Ackerman?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a few questions on this one, so I'll just kind of start with where my notes are for this one. I see we have the fire hall expansion at two and a half million dollars. Would it be possible to get an RFD for what that looks like, even if it is a capital project? It would just be nice to know what is required, where is the need, possible funding sources, that sort of thing? Because I think if we have two and a half million coming up in a couple of years potentially, or whenever that's needed by the fire department, it would be good to know ahead of time, so we can plan for that accordingly. In addition to that, sorry, my other questions are just with regards to wetland development. I know the Wetlands Enhancement Committee was kind of looking at making some recommendations for funding opportunities for this one. So did we need the $200,000 in the budget for that at this year? Is that potentially for low-hanging fruit? Or is that just kind of a placeholder, so we can build upon that when we want to get into some more costly additions to wetlands?
Through Chair to Councilwoman Ackerman's, that, the 200,000 for the wetland development there, that is a, a bit of a carryover project from this year, it includes the dog park, things that we were working on for this year. That's why that 200 is, is in there at this time. It will be, it will change for final, because I know we have spent some money on the dog park, we just didn't, and hadn't got all of those together. So that's actually a bit of a carryover from last year. It's not the new, it's not the new, new ongoing wetland development. Is that correct, Kevin?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Any question about the truck replacements? Sounds like we're replacing all the trucks, I guess.
No, actually. To the councillor, through the Chair, I discussed that this afternoon with, with, with Sarah. Well, that's not correct. Okay, I'm sorry, that, this was put in there before and I don't know how that happened. And yeah, that's not, not correct.
What would, what would be more typical of?
More typical would be three years, you want to keep your trucks from eating too much, the one to replace him is, is nearly 15 years old. So that, I mean, it's, yeah, I don't know how we got every truck replaced here in the next five years. That's not correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. I'm just looking here and I see garbage truck under Public Works and then it's down below as, as well. Is there a reason why it's in two places?
You see it, yeah, oh, I put it down twice, look at that.
Where's the other one?
Place the one below for 320.
Public Works as well.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, that's, yeah.
And they're two different places.
Yeah.
That's spot on, thank you for that.
Yeah, take out the public one.
The public works one, and just, okay, okay, we'll keep going to mean that one. Excellent, thank you.
Any other questions?
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
And then we still have CPO vehicle in here for further down the line. Again, kind of probably further to that conversation earlier, until things are finalized, we won't know what that looks like with the, with the CPO program.
Oh, yes, that is correct. Yes, we, this, this budget, we are just status quo budgeting. Once we know what's happening with that, we can revisit all of those areas.
Okay, great. I'm sorry, one last question, if I may, through the Mayor. What is the recreational concrete pad under recreation?
Can you roll over that, is anyone there there? I just want to spare a second, I must not talk, so. Okay. Be with me one minute. I'll just see if I have any notes on that for us this one.
Okay, thank you.
I can get back to that one then, unfortunately, it just tells me about the funding. I don't have, actually have any other information about that particular project at this time. We can look into that for you and get back to you.
That would be great, thank you.
I have a question about the, I guess, with the numbers in here, like say for the garbage truck or the other trucks. Are these, these are the numbers that we're budgeting for with our annual reserve contributions? Is that correct?
Through the Chair to Councilwoman Ackerman, yes. It's, if it's green, that is being funded from our, from our reserve and it's been put into the reserve for the, you know, to be used for the future. So this being used from the yearly contributions.
Okay.
All right, are we good to carry on? Looks like it.
Okay, so now we're on to a projected balances of the reserves. This will change, it's not even a, if that it might change. We, because we haven't done year-end yet, we're not sure exactly where the reserves fall for the end of 24. So we just thought, I've just done a quick projection of where they might be at the end of 2025. So there will be a more robust one of these coming forward for final budget. But that was just to give you a, a broad idea of where the reserves might be sitting at the end of 25 based on the budget presented.
Councilwoman Ackerman?
Thank you, Mayor Martina. Just a question for administration, would it be possible to have yearly reserve contributions added to this chart? So that we can look at what the yearly additions would be?
Through the Chair to Councilwoman Ackerman's, I have actually started building that as we speak. I'm building a, a new sheet that will show the new opening balance, your transfers in, your transfers out, and will actually show you exactly what's being used, what those transfers out are. So you have a, a much better idea of what the reserves have been used for. So I'm hoping to bring that to you for final budget. As a spring budget, just to be clear.
Councilor Calton?
Thank you. Hey, do we know which one of these reserves, which ones are required and which ones are voluntary? And, and maybe we don't have that conversation now, but as I'm looking at these, they are very smart to have. But as we spoke earlier, it's really good to have processes in place in the event that we have new council members coming on board. So if any of these are voluntary, I'd love to see them, where we have some motions coming forward to, to sort of lock them in.
Through the Chair to Councilor Caldwell. Yes, but looking at this list, I would have to look into them a little more carefully. I believe there was a reserve policy in the, in the works, so CEO Benridge and I are going to be looking through that to bring back to council as well. The off-site levees one would be very much restricted, just to off-site levy projects as per the bylaw etc. The rest of them, I would have to look into, but just a quick glance of them, I would say that they are all unrestricted, which means they're at council's discretion.
Yeah.
There would be some reserves that may be restricted through the MGA. Just glancing at these ones, I don't see any of that, but I would definitely have to at least get that a little bit more to be 100% sure.
I, if we could, if we could just put that on a to-do list to explore in the future, would be really lovely, thank you.
Okay.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. Um, I just a, a general question through the Mayor to Sarah about the reserves. I, I know in the past, we've had lots of conversations about the reserves and, and policies for the reserves and different things like that. So for example, like we have the general reserve, which is, to my understanding, it's just where the surplus goes and then it kind of just sits there. And we don't really have any solid reserve policies for it at this time. And then we have other reserves that we aren't making contributions to, like the community ag, which is going down. And then we have things like the Parks Reserve that has been quite depleted, I guess. So maybe more of a, like a philosophical question, but you know, one of the things we've talked about in the past is, is switching the reserves around or redesignating them if they're not useful, but then even creating a general reserve policy, like for the surplus, what are, what are your thoughts on that?
Through the Chair to Deputy Mayor. Yes, when I, I have to, I haven't looked at the reserve policy as of yet. When we get back to, to looking through those, that would be all the things I would look at. And it would also include something, what we do with the surplus each year and when we do that. Surplus would flow through to what's called the accumulated surplus, so it's not actually a reserve, it's just sort of like a little holding pot. And that would then be, we would then be bringing that back to council. So you know, maybe the surplus last year was $100,000. You know, we can then move this to a reserve and then council would then direct administration to which reserves they would like that money moved to and at what amounts. And the reserve policy should really cover all of those things, so when we're reviewing that, we're going to make sure we have that in there.
Okay, thank you for that.
Did that answer the question?
It did, it did, and it, reserves are kind of, yeah, it's just, there's a lot, there's a lot here and a lot of different things. And I think that's great, I think our reserves are overall, they're really healthy, which is, which is good. But just looking for more of that, again, kind of what Council Caldwell was saying, that, that carryover and just solidifying our processes a little bit.
Any other questions, or are we all good to move on? Okay.
And so these next three pages here just sort of show you where we look for our sort of grants that are coming in and into the future as well. So we have the Canada Community Building Fund or the Gas Tax Fund, as people may know it from the past. They generally use this to fund our road rehab project every year. We don't have the amounts known, obviously, all the way to 2034. So we have an annual allocation of around 166, just as a, as a base amount coming in for the next, for the next few years. The next one we have is MSI, this is on its way out. So you can see after 25, with the storm trunk 45th Ave project going ahead in 25, we should have completely spent all our MSI money at the end of 2025. The next one is the Local Government Fiscal Framework, the LGFF, we are projecting around 500,000 a year, it seems to be where it's sitting. Hopefully a little bit more each year, which would be good. And then you can see that what we're using that for in, in the, in the, this, for this year, next year and the year's going forward. Part of it will help with the road rehab to keep that going and make sure that that's funded by grants. We have sewer lining project that's moving forward from 24 to 25. And in 26, there was a listing here for the Miners Park Concrete Pad to be, to be used for that as well. So that's just sort of a, an overview of the grants. And you can see that the ending balance there, we'd be able to use these grants for future projects as well that we can look into and see what match that criteria that we can use for that. That is, well done. And we've answered that one question. So the recreational concrete pad that was in the 10-year plan is the Miners Park Concrete Pad.
Thank you for, for identifying that.
Thank you, Christine, that was lovely.
So I guess if I, Mayor Martina, if I could ask a question on that? Thank you. So I guess we're, we're talking about wetlands development and, and things like that, and what might go there. And I know nothing's really been decided, but this is, this is not just, you know, unfunded capital, this is like LGFF funding, right? So.
Yes.
I guess like, you know, we're talking about doing, make, moving some stuff over to the wetlands, like is it still necessary to keep this in for Miners Park? For the skating rink, which has potential to move or not move or, or something like that, like I guess, does this still need to be included here or would this money better be used for like wetlands development?
To the Deputy Mayor, council through the Chair, I, I think, if I recall, this 200,000 for this concrete pad was a discussion when we worked on this 10-year capital plan a number of years ago. And I think there was talk of replacing the skating rink with a concrete pad. Again, this is a working document and it isn't anything in the study, so that 200,000 can be changed, can be reallocated to what council sees fit, things change. So if that, if that answers your question?
That does, yeah, the 150, yeah, it does answer my question, because, yeah, and I guess just seeing it in the line of the, the LGFF, that maybe it feels more solidified to me than just, you know, kind of randomly having it hang out in a 10-year plan. But yes, that does make sense, thank you.
Any other questions, or are we all good? All right, let's keep going.
Okay, so there is also in the LGFF and operational amount, 2025, they have not let us know this amount yet. So for the purposes of this budget, I've used the 2024 total. Last year it was allocated out to the areas you can see on the screen in front of you here. The, if it changes, we can change these amounts and the way that the budget is set up, this won't actually affect taxation amounts at all, it would just be a, a administrative change to some of the amounts. Okay, so now we're moving on to more of the operational budget. To just minimize, I don't know if we've touched on these before, but just to, to clarify, for the insurance, we don't get that till around February. So an estimate is used, what we have done is taken a three-year average of the increase and we've kind of looked at it and it's around seven and a half percent. So that is what has been applied to insurance for this particular budget. And I get that in February, I can do those changes for final. Again, the RCMP policing, we touched on this as well. I used a 5% increase just based on previous funding models. If that comes back, that they're not increasing it, that's, that would be great. But for the purposes of this, it is, is in there at 5%. A utility rate is also something we look at every budget, so I've detailed the, the changes below. We do look at them as a cost recovery level per year. I put per year because of the water and sewer, we can get into that. So we do, we need to reassess these rates yearly. So with the water, just as a reminder, there is an agreement. So with the water, just as a reminder, there is an agreement that we cannot charge a rate higher than, or less than the city of Lethbridge charges their residents. We don't know what that rate is at this time. I put in a 2% contingency increase from their last rate, just to make sure what I'm presenting is not lower than that. But again, we may have to adjust that further down the road. So with water, water and sewer at the moment, we'll see when we get to the individual departmental breakdowns. There is a slight, well, there's subsidizing taxes to a degree at this time. And what I've done for this year is I've made it that same amount. So we're not increasing that or decreasing that at this time. So for the cost recovery for 2025, we are, we are doing that. But we may have to address those amounts that are subsidizing taxes in the future. It's something we can control. It's nothing that is incredibly urgent. It's just if we're trying to get to full cost recovery for these things, that's something that we would address in the future. So but talking about the cost recovery for this year, the rates needed to be increased by 1.9308%. I applied that same rate to the flat rates and the consumption rates, just so everyone, if they're on flat or consumption, have those that same percentage impact. So the table there, you can see the differences between the 24 and the 25 rates that would be charged. For sewer, or should I pause after water if anyone has any questions on that or? Just wait.
All good for questions? I think we're good.
Okay, so sewer, basically the same what I've just said before, except put sewer instead of water. This is increased by 3.18, again, applied to all rates but consistently. And the impact is on the table you see on the screen now for the, what will be charged in 2025. For storm and waste, there's really no change that was required to make us meet. Because I think it was a slight one in waste, but it really wasn't anything that would hit a radar. So for recycling, also no change. At this time, the impact of the changes to the regulations are unknown. We're hoping to get that done before final budget. Again, no any increase or decrease to the budget for recycling once these, these new regulations are through. We would keep this as cost recovery as well, so that would be passed to the rates to ensure that we still have that, that sort of no impact bottom line for recycling. And so the table now in front of you here just shows average residential property bill. We've said, we've estimated they're using 20 cubic meters of water per month, and that would be the change they have on a monthly bill. So from 24 to 25, the difference would be $2.29 on their bill. That's the utility rates. I think, yes, I'll pause here if there's any questions on the utility rates.
Anything from anyone? Uh, Counselor Caldwell, do you have a question? Okay.
I do. Sorry, I apologize. Can you just say again? So these are based on current rates? We don't know what the city's doing this year, right? So these numbers are based on current rates?
They're based on a rate to ensure that we have cost recovery for our expenses this year. So there is a change from last year. The only, the only stipulation is so long as our rate is higher than what the city's rate is when they come up with this, we should be fine. If it ends up not being, I would have to revisit that part of the budget and redo that rate.
Okay. Wonderful. Thank you.
All right.
Now we get to, oh, sorry?
No, go ahead.
Okay, so this is a quick overview of the whole budget. And we basically touched on this with other areas there. We have that, you can see at the bottom there, that taxation increase of $115.47. And again, that I sort of went over that with the slides at the beginning there for you. So there's not really a lot new there, apart from my typo on the RDMP instead of the RCMP. So I apologize for that. Moving on to the fiscal area. The taxes at this time, we leave it the same so we can see what the difference is that is required. So we obviously adjust those when we pass the budget to make sure we're passing a balanced budget. For the revenues, there was some increased revenue from the franchise fees and an increase to penalties, just to reflect the previous actuals. Not a lot of difference, but went up around $3,000. As far as the expenses go, can you scroll down? Up a little bit. There we go. I haven't really made any changes this time for the educational or green acres contribution, just to make sure that we're not affecting those taxes. Obviously, when they come in next year, I will put the correct amounts in. And then a mill rate will be established for those and we'll collect them from taxes. So there'll always be a net zero impact on the taxation. So therefore, from the fiscal area, there's a actual net taxation impact of minus $3,270. I'll pause here for questions on fiscal.
Counselor Ackerman's?
Thank you, Mayor. I got a question for administration. I kind of missed this earlier. But when I had this kind of as a general note for the items to be aware of, but do we have a list of the debentures? And when we are projected to pay them all off and what our yearly payments are? Like, is there a debenture kind of status chart or something that we can just have included in the final budget for information?
Yeah, through the chair to Counselor Ackerman's. I can definitely bring that forward. I do not have that here or today, but I can definitely bring that forward for you to show you where our debentures are sitting.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Nope. Okay.
Move on to council. There's no change to the revenues. You don't make us a lot of money, apparently. Expenses though, we have, and there's a little bit of inflationary increases for the travel expense and conferences. And also an allowance for a good strategic planning session after the 2025 election. I don't go over the personnel on each of these, just because we've done that as a whole earlier on in the presentation. So overall, the net taxation impact is $10,200. I'll pause here as well.
Any questions? There are none. We'll keep going.
Administration. We have some, the LGFF and ACP grant funding for the municipal interns. There's a, there's a change there. We also brought from reserves increased for the software changeover that we mentioned earlier or the continuing financial software changeover that was required. An addition of the 2025 projects is the website branding project was at $15,000 for 2024. So that extra 45 is to bring it to the 60. And then the Bellamy financial software that we need to have to make sure we can continue with our operations for 2025 with the $45,000 also coming across from a reserve. Moving to the expenses. Obviously, we then add the internship expenses, which are ground funded. We've done some inflationary obligations with audit and insurance, the budgeting software, minor adjustments for telephone posted. All those inflationary parts come in. Same with the materials, goods and supplies. I went through and aligned a lot with our actuals and estimated projections there. That actually gave us a little bit of a decrease on our materials, goods and supplies. And then financial services charges, just a slight increase in bank fees are going to bring more into line with actuals. So the net taxation impact for administration is $12,300. Again, of course.
I have a question on that if I, if I could, please.
Sure. Go ahead.
We've had some conversation about upgrading our technology for meetings. Would that be considered capital? Would that be under operating? Would that be within this budget or?
Through the chair to Counselor Caldwell.
Sorry?
It would depend on the scope of that project. I think it would, it would more fall under a capital project than an operational project, though.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? No? Okay.
Moving on to the fire department. You'll notice the, we have drawn from reserves $15,000 to cover the security system and the air conditioning we mentioned earlier. And obviously conversely, those expenses are also included in the expenses area. So the contracted and general services is the purity system. There was also, there was a budget called engineering budget under the fire department. It had not been used for a number of years. So I'm proposing that we move that to reserves. It's already in the budget. But we can just move it to reserves to add another $10,000 to the fire department reserve and going, ongoing into the future. You can never have enough in reserves. And also some inflationary adjustments there as well. The materials, goods, supplies, clothing, shoes was inflationary. The air conditioning we mentioned earlier, that expense is in there. And we've also given them a small promotional materials budget implemented as well for some, you know, if they wanted to do fire safety, advertising, etc., they now have a little budget for that. Here was where I have added the $10,000 we, I just mentioned earlier to the reserve transfer. And again, there was inflationary increases for some of the payments as well. So that net taxation impact for fire is $7,375.
Counselor Ackerman's, did you have anything or are you all good? All good? Okay. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. I was just wondering, so for something like Jasper where the, where the crews go out and then there is some, some funds that come in for the use of the truck, where does that show up in this, this page or does it?
Jasper, that would have been, that would be for anyone this year, so.
That's right. Nice. Through the chair to Deputy Mayor. Yeah, anything from those Jasper ones would have been in the 2023? Did you, did you? 2024, sorry. 2023 and 2024. They wouldn't be within the budget though, because that was something that obviously came along after. So that would be something that we would look at when we were looking at our actuals. More towards sort of a year-end wrap-up of our 24 expenses, etc. So we don't budget for those because they're emergencies, right? We don't know they're going to happen.
Okay, okay. Okay, I hear everything. Okay, thank you. But it will show up in the, in the budget line if there is revenue coming from it.
And this, and what you're looking at here, no, it would look up and it would show up in our actuals and would, you know, if we did build more this year, we're going to show a huge sort of revenue spike, but then also be an expense spike as well. It'll balance itself out during the effects. Yeah.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
If I, if I could add on to that as well, please?
Sure.
Thank you. So we also sent a truck up north to provide assistance in 2023. And I, and I don't recall having a conversation about that showing up in revenues for, in our actuals. Does anybody else recall seeing that? It would, I guess it's just to see sort of that cost benefit analysis. Being a good neighbor is super important. But knowing how much debt we're, we're taking on, assuming by doing that, might be important information for us to have.
The deployment plans are all covered by the province or by the bed of governments through the LEAP program. So it is a, there is no, almost no cost to us. All the wages for the employees are paid for, built back to the province. The truck is built out at an hourly rate, which is well above any wear and tear that is done on the truck. Anything that's made to basically break down during that deployment, those repairs are covered as well. So it's, anything I've ever, this is more than, it's always a net positive. I know this year was
Yeah.
Almost $40,000 for a week. And I believe last year's deployment of 2023 was only $6,000 and throughout in force, probably $8,000.
Thank you so much. That was my understanding. But it would be, I guess, maybe because it is something extraordinary, maybe it wasn't a part of the budget. But, you know, to have, to have access to that information is really good. So thank you very much.
Sorry, can I just, yeah, thank you. I just figured out who the mystery voice is. It's Mitch. Hi, Mitch.
Yes.
I was trying to figure that out too.
Took all that knowledge for you to recognize it, I guess, eh?
Yeah, well, very true. It's a big deal. But so, sorry, and just to clarify further, because now I'm a little bit confused about that. So that, that, then that revenue goes straight into the reserves and it's then allocated from there? Like from, from specifically from the trucks, not from the individuals that go?
Any leftover surplus in the fire department budget is always directed back to the fire department reserves. So it shouldn't go back there.
I didn't, I can look and see what happened in 23. I don't know. I haven't looked at anything to do with 23. I can look back on that and see if that was, if that was done for sure. I can look back. The 23 books being closed, of course, I can't really do anything too much about that. But there, I'm, I'll definitely find out exactly what happened with that.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
All good to move on? Yep. Okay.
So next we have emergency measures. As you can see, this is really the increase due to the new regional agreement that I mentioned earlier. So the $19,375 is that increase for that regional coverage. That's all there is there for emergency. Protective services, there's been, there's an increase in the bylaw coverage contract. We have that with bearings and there's a slight increase each year, so that's in there as well. Then of course, that reserve we spoke about for funding the purchase of the radar, the handheld radar. For the expenses, there was some minor adjustments and with insurance, etc. They also had moved some unused budget from one area up into the contracted services. So what we've also done this year is looked at actuals and just, have we got our budget in the right places? It doesn't change the amount of the budget, but it's just helping those particular areas get the correct amount in their budget. So there's a little bit of that that's gone on this year. Again, the 5% increase for the RCMP is in this area here too. And of course, the radar gun purchase expense is in the budget. And again, the reallocation that I just mentioned has gone moved up to contracted services. So overall, net taxation impact for by law is $11,305.
Any questions? All good? Okay, we'll keep going.
The public works, common services. There was some 2020, some items in the budget of 2024 that have been completed. So we need to remove those for 2025 because they're not ongoing. So this was $15,000 project that was funded from the reserve. So of course, we don't need that, that reserve funding in 2025. So that's been removed. And again, obviously, the removal of the cost of those projects from the 2025 budget as well and the expenses we could see there. We have site doc yearly subscription. This is our health and safety program that is, was implemented, was it during this year or?
Uh, last year.
Last year. So this is the first year we need, we've had it on there and there's a yearly subscription for that. There was a new alarm monitoring cost. We have a additional telephone line to help with our alarm monitoring. And again, minor adjustments, inflationary, etc. And same for materials, goods. There was just some adjustments for electricity and gas. So overall, the net taxation impact is $12,425.
Any questions? No? Okay, we'll carry on.
Roads. Now, this is another area where we did quite a bit of realigning of budget line items. So it looks like there's a lot going on in that difference column, but a lot of it is just that realigning. We also have proposing to transfer some unused equipment budget to reserve. You scroll down to slide. Yeah, so that's $5,000 there is that realigning effect, putting that difference into the reserve. And again, minor adjustments for the materials, goods, again, realigning. You can see ones up 33, ones down 37. So it's, that's mostly what that is and some minor inflation adjustments. So overall, for roads, net taxation impact of $5,950. Sorry, pause for questions. I should say that. Sorry.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. So when you talk about the transfer of unused equipment budget to reserve, this is obviously just, this isn't large capital purchases like trucks and mowers and things like that, is it?
Through the chair, no, this is operational repairs, those, those sorts of things. It's definitely not capital purchases.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other questions? Nope. Okay, move on.
So for stormwater, there was actually no change uh from twenty-twenty-four. Pause for questions.
Any questions? I think we're all good.
Okay. Moving on to uh water. Uh, obviously we changed the uh, the sales based on the new rate that was needed to cover the expenses. Um, and from the reserve, we are covering the skater upgrades that were mentioned earlier and the expenses, uh, insurance increase. The skater expenses in there now, and we did some adjustments for electricity and gas. Um, if you scroll down there, you can see the net taxation impact under the difference there is zero. Um, but we are still subsidizing taxation by the hundred and twelve thousand eight hundred from water. Which is, which is okay. We can work on that into the future. It's nothing that um is, is urgent. Uh, but it just shows that we're not, we're actually bringing in a little more from our water than um, as far as cost recovery thing would look like. So I'll pause for questions here.
Councillor Colpa?
Uh, thank you. Um, I apologize. You know what? Um, the first set of slides that you showed us was the um, impacts of taxation for all our additional um expenses. And I, I wish I could remember. Was there a larger total and then you deducted the hundred and twelve thousand? To come up with the, the final number or? The hundred and fifteen thousand something, something?
Uh, through the chair to councillor Caldwell. Because there's no difference between twenty-four and twenty-five, that's not part of the taxation impacts. It would only be if there was a, an actual difference that I would then be describing why there's a difference for that. Um, this is an ongoing um surplus, I guess, if you like, in, in the, in the water department. Um, if that wasn't there, we would need to then um generate another hundred and twelve thousand dollars of taxation. It's just offsetting taxes at the moment, which is, it's, it's just something that we can work on in the future. Uh, but right now I think it's, it's fine to, to leave it as it is.
Damn. I thought that maybe we could just sort of deduct that from a hundred and fifteen. Thank you.
Any other questions? Nope. All right.
Uh, moving on to sewer, um, very similar. Obviously change in the, in the revenues to balance out um our, our cost recovery. Um, and even insurance increase we contracted, the purchase of other governments, uh, just an increase in the cost from the city. I just based that on the actuals. I just needed to bump that. Um, that budget up just a little bit. And again, minor adjustments and there was a slight debenture adjustment just to, just to balance that out. Um, again, you can see the difference column there, net taxation is zero. Um, we're keeping that same amount, the forty-seven, six twenty-five is the same as water. That, and that sort of amount is offsetting taxation as well. But there's no difference from twenty-four to twenty-five.
Any questions? None? Okay, carry on.
So for waste collection, um, there was an increased revenue from our, our waste collection contracts. Um, and a tiny, tiny slight increase in the rate, like it honestly didn't. It was, it's just overall, it looks like there's an, an increase in our budget, but you, um, if you take it down to the percent, the two decimal places, there's no change. Um, for expenses, uh, we did some adjustments in insurance and landfill charges, um, parts and equipment, again, just those, just slight adjustments. And um, we had an incremental adjustment to the reserve transfer in our, in the, in the five-year plan. So I have included that as well. Um, again, you can see net taxation impact is zero. So waste collection is a, a full cost recovery operationally for the town of Coleridge. Any questions?
Uh, deputy mayor?
Thank you. Um, so, sorry. I'm, I'm just looking at this. So waste collection, so that there's been an increase to the contracts or um, for, that we do for other people, like for other, that's not within the town, right? Um, discount, like, does council have to approve that increase?
Uh, through the chair to um, or to all of council. Uh, no, we have an agreement with them that actually has incremental um increases for a number of years. I don't know if it's a three-year or five-year. I have a three-year contract and they were signed very recently too, weren't they? Given, they were to last year. Uh, so we actually have signed those agreements. Um, they don't come through, uh, they don't need to come through council for the um approval of those.
Okay, thank you. And so, so then, so there's a little bit of money made, but overall it's, it's no change to the, to the budget. Or sorry, like, no change to the net taxation impact, sorry.
No, there isn't yet. It's all, it will always be zero, especially once, once we reach this point where we actually have an, an, an operational cost recovery. Um, I would never want to change that for sure. So I would always change those rates to make sure that we keep that, um, that cost recovery through the utility. It's a great place to be.
Yeah, awesome. Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we'll keep going.
Uh, for family and community support services, FCSS, um, there's a minor increase to the, the annual contribution. Um, that has not been um, formalized yet, uh, but just looking back historically, there was just a slight increase for that. So taxation impact of five hundred dollars.
Any questions? Seeing none, we'll carry on.
Um, just for planning. Uh, last year, uh, twenty-four, there was the uh housing needs assessment project of, of fifteen hundred dollars. Uh, so obviously removed that um funding because that was, was completed in twenty-twenty-four. Um, mostly in the expenses you'll see is the increase in the planning services fees that we had spoken about earlier. So overall, the net taxation impact of seventeen thousand nine hundred.
Any questions on this?
I just have a question on, on this in terms of, um, this is regarding like the planning work that we're having contracted out to ORSC. Is that, is that correct? In addition, like the other component that we had for ORSC was for our membership, but this would be for the actual planning services.
Uh, to the chair, I believe that is all included in this one. I did not see the membership going out from any other area. So I believe the membership and the um services are all included in this amount here. At least, uh, that's where, if there's something else you can add on it.
No, I think I was just looking at it because I, when we talked about at the beginning, that was in the presentation that you showed us. So sorry, yes, that's part of this. Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Uh, any other questions? Nope. All right.
Turning on to subdivision.
I have a question if I could, please.
Oh, sure.
Thank you. Typically, don't we realize revenue on this and from um, uh, like permits and things like that? Development permits and? Do they all go to, they don't go to ORSC, do they?
Uh, through the chair, no, they do come to us. Um, I believe, I'm not sure if they're included in this or the next section.
Okay.
Because there's a municipal planning section and there's a subdivision section. And I haven't had the chance to delve them through all the details on that. Um, can we scroll down to that one? I just want to see the, the revenues. Um, yes, looking at that amount there, I would, the revenues from own sources, I would say that the development permits are in this section here.
Oh, from the other?
Planning ones, I would have to look into exactly what those revenues are, causing was no change. Um, and within our timeline, I didn't delve into too much into that into detail, but I can definitely look into that and get back to council as to what makes up the revenue for the municipal planning se- uh, section.
Uh, any other questions? Okay, we'll keep going.
So moving on to the, the subdivision area and development, um, um, yes, there were a lot here. Uh, basically we did an advertising increase for um our subdivision and development area. Um, so really that, and the taxation is actually a decrease of twelve hundred dollars. Um, just as, and we're not talking about personnel too much, but there was some reallocation of um percentages between different areas. So this one actually had a little slight drop in, in that there. So that's why we're leaving up with a um negative taxation impact for this particular area. This one does also include the commercial industrial and assessment we spoke about earlier that is still in the budget. Um, I didn't remove it for twenty-five. I'll pause here.
Any questions from anyone? All right, we'll keep going.
Okay, so moving on to parks, um, just looking through the uh recreation contribution from the county, I increased that a little bit, just looking at our actuals for the past few years. The budget needs to be bumped up a little bit there. And of course, the reserve we talked about earlier for the um funding of summer student. Uh, as far as the expenses go, um, the sprinkler system maintenance uh this year, so there was an increase for that. And again, got old insurance adjustment. Um, and under materials, goods and supplies, inflationary adjustments. And we looked at our body maintenance um budget and just looking at the actuals, we were able to reduce that budget down a little bit. So overall taxation impact is actually another negative of one thousand four hundred and twenty-five for parks. I'll pause here as well.
Questions? Uh, deputy mayor?
Uh, am I, I need, yeah, okay, sorry. Thank you. Uh, through the mayor to administration. Um, one thing, when, when we talk about parks, um, it draws me to our strategic plan where we talk about making the town an attractive place to be. Um, and I know that we had some drought situations last year, but I was just wondering, um, like what would it take in, in this budget and this part of the budget to have an increase, um, to be able to, to be able to like maintain the weeds in a, in a more timely fashion or to water a little bit more. Um, and I know with that last year, um, you know, there was, sorry, can you guys hear me? I have a baby on my lap.
Yep. I'm all good.
There was quite a few, um, it's taken away my, my point. Um, anyway, I just think that this is an area where maybe we could spend a little bit more time um and money. Um, and that might be good for all of Colhurst. And again, it is our strategic, on our strategic plan to make the town an attractive place to be. Um, and encourage folks to have nice looking yards. Um, and again, not wanting to come down on anybody, but just noticing that, you know, we do have a lot of weeds and, and, you know, we're even talking about a sprinkler system. And to me, it just, again, I'm aware that there was a drought last year, but just didn't seem to be like a ton of watering happening. So I guess what would it be to increase the service level in this area, if that makes sense?
Uh, to the deputy mayor, to the chair, um, that is something that we can look at. Uh, weed control is always a very difficult one. Uh, it's very weather dependent. Uh, we like to do it in May, but again, this year we had a really wet spring. Uh, it was pushed back even into July. And then once it gets to plus thirty, it's dangerous for spring. You could actually damage your grass. So it is a timing issue and having limited staff resources. Um, that's probably the biggest thing for weed control. Uh, we did do more fertilizing this year, which I've got in the budget again for next year. Um, fertilizing above watering is actually more effective, but it's a little bit more costly. But uh, we do have the money in the budget for that. So uh, if it's a priority of council, we can definitely try and work more on our timing for, for, and hopefully the weather cooperates for getting the parks a little bit nicer.
Yeah, thank you. And I, and I really appreciate that answer. And I know that, um, I'm sure you guys come into lots of unforeseen things with the, with the weather and stuff like that. And I think that, I guess the reason why I wanted to bring this up is because um it's something people see, right? Um, it's the main thing people see and, and we take a lot of pride in our, in our parks. And I, I know you do as well. Um, and so just, just looking to see if there's anything um from council perspective that can be done to support that. Um, and yeah, that was it. Thank you.
The, the, the one thing that we could look at is contracting some of the spraying because uh, there are, we do, we do look at your bulk eighty-five acres. Seventy-five or eighty-five acres is what we're looking after.
That's a.
Yeah, but uh, it is something that I can put pride where you're on with the staff and hopefully we can work our best with what we have to get out of it for sure.
Thank you.
Can I, can I ask? Would, would council have an appetite um to ask if we could get some numbers on, on contracted spraying and see if that's something viable for a, for the budget? When we're, as we're going through it over the next couple of months?
Uh, C- councillor Ackermans, was that, are you in response to that or is this a different question?
Yeah, yeah, I was just gonna say, I would support seeing what the numbers would look like for this.
Yeah, I think what we could look at is we could look at some uh, some other items as well, such as variation and things like that, doing a little bit of contracting with that in the parks. And probably the focus on sun nets, uh, Imperial Meadows and uh, Miners Park. Um, that's the main things to work on there. I could look at top for some contractors on giving some help with those parts.
Yeah. Thank, thank you for bringing that to our attention, Deb.
Uh, councillor, or deputy mayor, you're all good? Or did you have a, a question?
Yes, no, sorry. That's, it's, sorry, things are getting a little complicated over here with the baby. Um, but no, I really, I appreciate the discussion around this and the, and the conversation and the answers from um the director of public works. And, and I would like to see um what can be done in this area to maybe increase the service level a bit.
Great. Um, we'll carry on if there, if there's nothing else.
Um, at the exterior, there's the community hall. Um, again, just going through revenues adjustments to meet actual, actuals for the last um few years. Uh, last year, there was a um, an amount in for a facility booking software system. Um, that has now been obviously removed for twenty-five, that was done in twenty-four. So um, again, with expenses, obviously remove the cost of that as well. So the funding and the cost both come out. So there's no actual impact. Um, there was a, an apartment that the advertising budget was just sitting not being used. So we are um proposing that being moved to a reserve for the community hall. Um, that's about, that was eighteen hundred dollars, I believe. Um, this again, got old insurance adjustments. Um, and then the contributions, you'll see the increase to reserve based on the unused um budget above. So, that is no impact on, on the taxes. Look, we've taken another one and put it into another. But overall, community hall has a net taxation impact of three thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Questions from anyone? Seeing none, we'll carry on.
And then we have uh community development. Um, this is one that's had a lot, but quite a few moving parts. So it's a little bit of a, a confusing looking at the difference totals there. Uh, so when the revenue is up there, uh, we did have the recreation master plan here. Um, so of course the amounts that we paid was, had been decreased. Um, and there is also the increase for the funding of the thirtieth anniversary project. So there's about, um, it, it, it balances itself out with what we've taken from the master plan and what we're going for the thirtieth anniversary. Um, thirtieth anniversary adding twenty thousand dollars, but we're removing like forty thousand dollars for the, the fact that we've already paid some of those master plan um amounts. Uh, so obviously the reserves um look like they're going down, but that's because we removed more than we put in for the year. Uh, again, into the expenses under the um, uh, contracted and general services, we have, have increased that twenty thousand for the thirtieth anniversary projects. Um, we uh, there was no advertising or sort of membership subscription budgets uh for community development. So we've added those in there. And of course, the expense for the rec master plan has been removed and we already expensed that with that um out for this year. Um, there's also a slight uh adjustment to the annual library contribution. So overall, there is an increase of thirteen thousand three hundred net taxation impact for community development. They do have some carryover projects. Um, and here, obviously the remaining of the rec master plan is still there. Uh, the beautification for the eight thousand, that is the planter project that has, was um put off uh in twenty-twenty-four. And also um banners that were being replaced, some banner, um, natural banners and the, attachments as well being replaced. So that won't be finished, but that's also carrying over into twenty-twenty-five. Uh, so I'll pause here for questions on this one.
Any questions from anyone? All right. Oh, or deputy mayor?
Thank you. Um, not, not a question. I just, I, I think that it's important to note that although that there's been some big changes in this area, that the next net taxation impact is actually fairly low. And I, I for one think that's really good. Um, and, and it makes me happy to see it considering some of the big projects in this area. And so um, just wanted to say thank you to, to staff and admin on, on the work put into this.
Any other questions? Nope. Okay.
Yeah, so that concludes the departmental. Yeah, so that concludes the departmental rundown for the budget. There are some annual bylaws that will be coming forward to council and at, at the council meeting. We have to do an annual borrowing bylaw. The stuff that was a line of credit of three hundred thousand, I don't believe we've ever actually used that, but we do also need to do this to utilize our credit cards. So every year, we must pass a borrowing bylaw for those, so that will come to council at, at a, at a council meeting when we bring the budget for approval. Also, the fees and rates bylaw, there may be changes to the budget based on, on council discussion tonight. So we'll bring that once they will be finalized, if you like, to have that approved for January first. Just to ensure that we can use those, those new utility rates that need to be brought in as we saw in the budget. So those will come to you when we bring that, that final budget for your approval. Any questions on the bylaws?
No? Alright, moving on.
And so just as a quick rundown on the taxation, okay, we've touched on a lot of this earlier. It sort of just brings it all together. So the, as you say, the first paragraph there, we have the, that, the budget impact of the hundred and fifteen and forty-seven dollars that we've seen a few times throughout this presentation. Again, this is prepared without knowing assessment figures, some bills that have come in, et cetera. So we get our assessment figures in February. We assess the impacts of that and bring that again to you for spring adjustments before we finalize any taxation increase or mill rates, et cetera. But if the assessments were to stay exactly the same in twenty-five as in twenty-four, these budget figures and these budget figures are used. Residential property, property assessed at around three fifty, about three hundred and fifty thousand would pay a hundred and seventeen dollars and seventy-seven cents more than in twenty-four, which is nine dollars eighty-one per month. For every hundred thousand of assessment of residential property, they pay thirty-three sixty-five, which is two dollars eighty a month. Looking at the non-res, because there's such a sort of variety of prices on, prices assessments on that, we do it for every hundred thousand. So for every hundred thousand of assessment of non-residential property, we'll pay forty-six twenty more per year or three dollars eighty-five per month. I believe that's the end of my budget presentation.
Thank you very much. That was, um, every year we keep on doing these, they just get better and better, and it's easier and easier to understand. I really appreciate the work that, that's gone into this and, yeah, it was very easy to, like I said, to understand and to know where things are coming from. So thank you. I'm going to just ask council if there's any questions or anything on the budget. Go ahead, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Just looking at page thirty-eight here with the, with the, if, if assessments were to stay the same. I, do you have any pulse on what they might be, or if they're gonna go down or up, or is it just kind of unknown at this time?
Through the Chair to the Deputy Mayor, I hesitate to answer. I believe there has been some residential growth, new properties being built within twenty twenty-four. So I'm expecting there will be some increase to the assessment for twenty twenty-five. We could, we can look at that when we get that. It's difficult for me to say, especially now, being fairly new as well. I just said that from Director of Public Works and Oval Operations, sorry, we had a little chat the other day about some of the new properties that should fit our assessment for twenty twenty-five, which is a good thing. So we can look at that assessment growth, and that assessment growth can actually be used to generate more revenue. So we can maybe even bring the, the taxation rate down a little bit for final budget.
Awesome, thank you.
Council Ackermans.
Thank you, Mayor Montina. I guess just going back to what Deputy Mayor Florence was speaking of earlier with regards to the concrete pad at Miners. I know that this is still preliminary and the capital plan is subject to change, but I could see that being more of a community win if we were to look at something that comes out of a recommendation from the Wetlands Enhancement Committee. Possibly like if we were looking at a sports court or something like that, that would be a little bit more usable and get some people in that area. That would be kind of where I would like to see that allocation go towards. I know it's still early, but that's just kind of my thoughts.
Um, just a question. So, so having gone over this today, are we looking for a recommendation from council to, like, to make a recommendation to approve this budget at our next council meeting? From administration?
To the Chair. I think we would need some direction on if there's any changes that you would require from what you've seen. I didn't notice a lot as we went through. There were a few things that I need to amend and take out, like some of the, one of the capital projects was completed, et cetera. So there'd be some tweaking there. I think really the recommendation here would be one of two recommendations. One would be to, if there were changes that were needed, to reassess and bring back maybe to another committee. I believe we have penciled in the twenty-six for a possible budget meeting if necessary. Otherwise, it could be, the recommendation could be that we bring this back to council for approval as amended, because there will be some slight adjustments to a likely forementioned project that I will be removing. So I think that's the two, that's the way we would go with that, wouldn't we, Larry? Those two, yeah.
Great.
A little bit.
Oh, okay, and Director of Operations has just mentioned he'd like to look at parks a little bit again as well. So that might be something that we bring back as well. But we, we can bring it back to council as amended for approval at that time if, if, if the, if the changes aren't too drastic.
Great, thank you. Council Caldwell, I see you have your hand up.
Thank you. So essentially, right now, we're, we're just looking at the, the dollar amounts. Because I, I agree with Council Ackerman, Deputy Mayor Florence, that if we're looking at that dollar amount for that, you know, that project, it might be nice to see it reallocated to a different location. But those kinds of changes, we're not looking at right now, right? Like, my understanding is this sort of a work in progress, but the idea is that these are the dollar values that sort of allow for, you know, for us to sort of set the, I guess, utility rates and numbers and those kinds of things. Am I correct in that, or?
Yes.
Uh, yeah, through the Chair, yes, absolutely. We can, at the moment, just to get the interim budget passed. This is more operational, plus, you know, the capital projects we know are coming for twenty-five. This one is slated for twenty-six, so there is still time to, to change that past this particular meeting.
Thank you.
Um, is there any big changes that anyone's seen outside of the couple of conversations that we've had about some outliers or things that needed to be adjusted? If there's not, do we want to make a, make a motion to recommend this coming back to council as amended? Deputy Mayor?
Um, thank you. I guess at this time, and maybe correct me if this isn't the right process, but I would maybe like to not make a recommendation at this time, just because it's a lot of information and it's, for, for me, I like to like stew on these things for a little bit. And then if, if something comes up, we can talk about it then. I guess if we put the recommendation forward to accept it as a whole, then if, if there was any changes or, you know, had some time to consider it and deliberate it, that it would be going against a recommendation from committee of the whole. So is there a way that we could just not do anything with it right now? Does that make sense? Sorry. Again, I'm sick, so please bear with me.
So I'm just, I'm, so I'm just looking at our Director of Legislative Services for a bit of a backup on what we should do.
Thanks for the question, and through the Mayor to Deputy Mayor. One way to do that would be, you know, proceed as sort of proposed here previously to have the committee tonight recommend this document as amended to council. And then there would be nothing at all to prevent council, when the time comes, to consider that recommendation, to make an amendment before actually adopting the budget as it's presented. So in other words, just simply do an amendment if you'd like, or conversely, you could leave it and come back and, you know, go the other route and just adopt it outright once further amendments or, or changes and input has been received.
Okay, thank you. That was a weird question, so I appreciate the answer.
I, I would actually like to make a motion to recommend this document goes back to council with the amendments. So that we can then just keep the process moving and, and like Larry had indicated, if there's anything that needs to be changed at that point, we can do that, or we can kind of make those decisions at that point. I just think that it, he keeps the process moving for us at this, where we're at right now. So I've made that motion. Is there any, any questions on the motion? It wasn't very well worded.
Yeah, I, I do, if I, if I could, please.
Yes.
And, and I, and I have to apologize, but we're doing very different processes than what I was familiar with in the past. My understanding was, is an interim budget, and I, and I, for lack of a better term, is a bit of a straw dog or that idea. So that we, as new numbers come in, as we recognize changes occurring, we don't have everything we need in order to set that in stone. And so this is a work that we do straight through until we sort of lock it in with whatever final changes are in April. And it seems as when, when we went through the budget process last year, it, it felt as though, once we had sort of accepted that budget, it was, it became a little bit difficult to adapt it, to introduce new things. And now we have a, and now we have Sarah in place, and I'm wondering what the process looks like for us now. Is it?
As am I.
A work in progress and a lot.
Through the Chair to Council Caldwell. So I know you may be thinking, like, a, a, a while back, lots of councils sometimes just adopted last year's budget as their interim budget. And then we worked on a budget for final, because that's when we had all our figures. The way that it's looked at now is that helps, that holds up everything for four months of a year. So now an interim budget is more of a full budget. We've actually looked at everything we want to do next year. It's in there. So once it's passed, we can actually start hit the ground running come January. There's no, nothing to stop anything changing between now and, and final. If other projects come up or we learn something different, we can definitely change the interim budget. But it doesn't hold up any of the, the new initiatives we want to bring in and start for the year. So that's sort of why the interim budget now feels almost like a final in a way. But it's definitely not. We can obviously change anything that council wish. If we learn something different, we can come back, but it doesn't hold up some of those things that we know we want to do next year and that they passed. And we can actually start something a lot earlier than we used to way back when interims were done very differently.
I, I really appreciate that explanation for the differences. Thank you.
Uh, Council Ackermans.
Thank you, Mayor Montina. I guess just a question, when we go back to that capital plan, would we be able to amend that concrete pad right now as one of the amendments? I guess just, but when I, when I think about this one, we have the election coming up next year. And if this is something that's just a placeholder like two years out, if we feel that it would be better used as like wet, wetlands amenities, I would rather see that changed now versus having, say, a new council come in and then not really noticing that or being aware of that. Because I think when I look at the best interests of the community, I think that something used in the wetlands would serve the community a little bit better than resurfacing a rink that I feel is quite underutilized from what I've seen.
Through the Chair to Council Ackermans, yes, we can change anything that you like on that. We have it slated for twenty-six at this time. Were you wanting to put that into, into twenty-five? Or would you want to keep it in twenty-six, but at least have it earmarked for wetland development?
Yeah, I guess just the recreational concrete pad, if we could change that to wetlands and amenities or something like that, that would sit better with me. I don't know how the rest of council's appetite is for that, but that's just kind of something that I think that could be a tweak that would be beneficial.
Is anybody opposed to that change? I'm not.
Well, it's.
A, a Deputy Mayor, did you have, were you opposed? No? Um, if, if nobody's opposed, how would we have that as one of the amendments that's added in? Is that working?
Through, uh, to the Chair, we were just, as, as part of the ones that, as we're passing it as amended, we're keeping a note of all the discussions that have gone through, and we will put those amendments in. When I bring it back, I will have a listing of all the amendments from this meeting to the next meeting. Now, it's just, it'll just be in there, yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna read my motion, because I actually have one that was nicely drafted. So I move that the changes discussed at the November twelfth committee of the whole meeting be incorporated into the budget document and that they be recommended to council for approval. Um, I will ask, would anybody like to speak to this? I've already spoken to him, given my reasons, but would anybody else like to speak to this? Being none? Oh, yeah, Council Caldwell, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Just because I had a, a brand new learning about why this is more concrete. I appreciate, I appreciate that we are able to hit the ground running in January and start moving forward. We have one year, and I think we all have to work with intention to ensure that we have things that we really, that are our priorities in place. So thank you.
Great. Would anybody else like to speak to this? If not, I've made that motion. I will call the question. All those in favor?
We're, we're gonna just ask that you say who is in favor, because we can't see you. You're frozen on our end.
Oh, okay. Um, in favor, I see everybody as in favor. So there's no opposed. Great, the motion is carried. Uh, well, great work to our administrative team and making this process seriously so, so seamless in so many ways. So again, thank you for all of your hard work. With that. Oh, I'm sorry. Somebody say something?
Oh, no, I, I, I just said, thank you.
Oh, you're very welcome and thank you. We're glad to have you as part of the team. Um, with that, we do have this one other item that has been added today. So this is seven point one, Council Caldwell's request to attend FCSS AA conference in Edmonton. We did all receive the RFD from her earlier today. And Council Caldwell, maybe I'll just let you speak to that a little bit, and then we can ask, see if there's any questions from council as well.
Uh, thank you very much. And as I indicated earlier, I apologize for the last minute nature of putting this forward. I was invited to attend at the meeting last Wednesday. I think going on this committee or on this board, I had expressed an interest going forward again, an opportunity to sort of create a community wellness committee that includes Alberta Health Services, FCSS, RCMP, as well as members of our community. And and as always, when you're creating something new, it's important to be able to build those relationships and, and provide value for the organization that you're asking this of. And so having conversations with Zach, we spoke about some of the advocacy work I did in the past, thus the invitation. But there's also some sessions that I had discussed with him that are on that. Successes from communities that are already doing those kinds of things. And so I really wanted to go with that intention, that that could be an outcome that we're, that we're looking at for our community as well. And as well as, you know, there's breakfast with ministers. I don't know how many times we can put ourselves in front of them. Deb, Carleen, and I did just an exceptional job at RMA. And my hope is just to keep smiling and waving, keep those relationships growing. And so, yes, FCSS does provide the, the PREDIMs, they provide the transportation costs, they provide all of the costs associated. But because of our bylaw, they do, they do send the check to, to the town. And my request is that I'm able to have my transportation costs and my PREDIM costs covered for this extraordinary meeting. Thank you.
Great, thank you. I will go to council to ask if there's any questions. Um, I'm, I'm just referring back to the, the remuneration policy. And looking at, section three talks about our council salary, and one of the things that indicates in here is the attendance at conferences is part of the council salary. When, when I was looking at this policy in regard to this, I think that, like, from, from my perspective, I think that it makes sense to receive the, like, the registration and the meals as well as the hotel. But because of the way that it's written within our council policy, But because of the way that it's written within our council policy, we don't actually do per diems like that. Um, those per diems would actually be offsetting your your council salary and we took that into account when doing that. Um, for, that is my interpretation of it. And so um, I'm very much in support of of obviously like the mileage and the the hotel and the registration. Um, but from from my my, I guess, articulation of this, uh, the per diems wouldn't be a component of it. Uh, Deputy Mayor?
Um, yeah, thank you. I I would, I would agree with you, um, Mayor Montina. I think that um, I think that it's an, it's it's not, we're not saying there's no opportunity to go and participate. Um, and you know, Heather is, um, as she said, she she's been before a lot of ministers lately. Um, but but what I'm reading it here under extraordinary co- compensation is that it's this as if no stipend is provided and the stipend is provided, it's just going to the town. So like, obviously, you should get mileage for going up there and stuff, but um, I don't think you should be getting also the per diem on top of everything, because I would agree that this definitely falls within um, the role of our duties as council. Um, and that, that again, that attendance is still encouraged without the um, the per diem rate. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I I I have to uh, learn or I have to get a greater understanding of what extraordinary would mean then. I seem to be a little bit lost in that, because I actually haven't really filed for expenses for for um, anything up to this date, really.
So for like for me, when I, when I think of extraordinary expe- extraordinary situations, what I would be looking at is very similar to the way that like when Jesse had to do the um, Green Acres strategic planning, it was something that was required of his position within, as being a board member. Um, that doesn't happen every year. And so that, to me, would be something that's extraordinary, uh, where the per diem would be something that would be paid out, but conferences or professional development or things like that. Um, like whether it's RMA, Alberta Municipalities, um, economic development uh, conferences, all of those types of things. I believe that that is all included within our our salaries.
Okay, thank you. So then do I request that? Do I request then that FCSS not pay for those things to the town or they just do that and then it rolls into our budget, eh?
Yeah, that's what we've, that's what we had agreed on, I think, when we created this policy, was that any of the um, per diems or stipends would be directed directly to the town and they would offset the salaries, um, since we had kind of bumped them to include that.
All right, thank you for that response.
So so along with that, like, I'm happy to make the recommendation um, to to council that you receive uh, your reimbursement for the hotel registration and um, any me, any mile or I say hotel registration, mileage and food?
Okay.
Yes. Um, so I'm ha- I'm happy to do that. Um, so I've 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 made that motion. Um, is there any questions on the motion? Any discussion? Call the question. All those in favor?
In favor.
In favor.
Uh, any opposed? Deputy Mayor, were you in favor? I'm sorry, I didn't see.
I was waiting for Scott to answer. I was like, go ahead, Scott. Um, yes, I'm in, I'm in favor.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, so the motion is is carried. And with that, if there's no additional business, we will adjourn at seven fifty five PM.
All right, thank you all.
And when we stop the party?